Are good to go.
Hey, cordings up?
Good. So, let's call this meeting to order. It's May the 20th. This was originally a work session, but it became a special meeting because we do have one item of business. Read through the point. Girdwood's board supervisors, its committees and subcommittees, subject to the Alaska Meetings Act, as found in Alaska statute 44 of 62 dot 310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1 dot 25. Public meetings. Girdwood Board Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards and Conduct, calling it toward officially a 402. I'll read the land acknowledgement for a change. The Girdwood Board Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous people of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood, situated between the areas known to be the Naina and Lutik homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks to maintain sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples. Do a roll call. Mike Edgerton, Chair, Housing and Economic Development Supervisor, in the room.
Brian Burnett, Parks and Rec Supervisor.
Thank you. And online?
Guy Wade Rhodes.
Thank you. We do expect the other two supervisors to be here in about 10 to 15 minutes, so they will introduce themselves when they get here. Call for a entertain a moment to approve the agenda.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for the special meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Guy. I'm going to throw it out there, but I don't know if it's a requirement. We could possibly push Agenda Item Number One until we have all five people here, but I don't think it's I don't think it's contentious. Well, that's the last suggest that amendment if wished to. I'm not hearing any, so we'll stick with the stick with the amended agenda. I'll do this by consent unless I hear anyone objecting.
I bet you'd like to make a comment maybe before. Are you talking, no, are you talking about the agenda still?
Agenda.
Yep, no, a sense, good, thanks, sorry.
Right, so not hearing any objection, the agenda is passed by a sent. Now we can move on to item number one. Agenda item from LUC 2310 dash 05. The architects seeking a GBOS letter of non-objection conditional use permit for its triplex at 1550 Aliaska Highway, GR1 zoning district. Planning and zoning meeting is scheduled for tonight at 6:30. Details online. Land use passed a or passed a resolution asking us to a letter of non-objection for the plan subject to restriction on short-term rental use of the additional three units. So we have in front of us a letter of non-objection. We do actually have the representative I see here in Ellen. Ellen, is there anything you'd like to say or address?
Not a lot to say really. Just, I'm assuming you guys already have have looked at the the latest iteration of the drawings and basically we made some changes due to the the first meeting. We got rid of those roof decks and stair towers and added a more shed-like roof to lower the profile of the building and we added another parking space. And I think that's pretty much it. And then you see before you the letter. That's the result of how they voted at land use last week.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
I appreciate the the discussion that we had. It seemed like we had a well-attended meeting and the this amended letter of non-objection was well considered by the group that was here.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, just, yeah, you know, during that meeting, that was that was interesting when Brooks brought that up to include a recommendation to for no short-term rentals in for these units and you know, I I agree, I agree with that and I think it has to start somewhere, you know, I I'm curious if folks going through this through the Muni will be reluctant to come before the board to but I think it's important that they do and I think that, you know, to get the you know, let the public, I think it's important to let the public know too and and they did not object to this, which I thought was interesting and good, but yeah, I just, that was a a lot of times you remember stamp these or were against them, but this was interesting. I thought it was a good addition and just yeah, you know, it might start a new way we're all looking at these instead of just yeah, saying, yep, it looks good and going on or against it, but adding, you know, some recommendations, I think, is a good way to go about what we're aiming for until I got. And I do appreciate the changes they made for their neighbors and listening to their, the folks around there, the modifications to the buildings. I sure appreciated that.
Thank you, Guy. I'll repeat, we need comments made before. I think the the new set of plans definitely responded to most of the community. I think all of the significant community comments in the previous rounds. So again, thank you for, thank you to the architects and developers. I'm not optimistic that planning and zoning will take up our our request for that condition. They may do. They have the, they could do that. I think it's unlikely to happen, but nonetheless, I think it's important that we make the statement, so. Let's all comment online from, sorry. Did you have something, Margaret?
After Brett.
Yeah, Brett, do you want to go ahead?
Thank you. My comment on this is that it's ill-advised. This immediately picks winners and losers and places this property at a conditional disadvantage. I think that we maybe if we're going to listen to land use committee with something like this, then maybe we should have listened to land use committee when they also voted to restrict the use of ADUs to 30-day or longer rentals. And that would affect a class of properties instead of affecting one investor. I think that this is a bad precedent because it not only the problems with implementing and certifying that and then enforcing that, but we're asking one property to live under those rules when we have large developments like in Holden Hills that don't live up to that type of rule. So this has very little effect. It sets a bad precedent and it affects property values in a way that I don't think is encouraging investment in the valley. So I caution against this. We're on the verge of regulating STRs within the valley. And this just singles out as one individual investor and developer rather than a whole class of properties. So it's despite what LUC thinks.
Thank you, Brett. Like to just make one comment. I don't think this is a precedent because we've done exactly this thing before for other multifamily developments that were seeking a conditional use permit. So this actually consists of lost behavior over the last five years or so.
Yeah, I I think we're right. As you said, this is terrible. I'm trying to do something with the community to start hard again, different situations or different pieces. I mean, I don't finish short-term rentals, but I don't want these things to be developed in terms of the short-term rentals. But, you know, I'm sitting there, I'm building, I'm building something on my front. So if somebody in turn against me and target me individually for what I may want to do, I mean, again, do something for collectively for the community. That's one thing. But specifically, and again, I have no vested interest in this property. I don't care to that extent. But I don't think we should be going after properties on a one-on-one basis. I think that might have been consistent policy and, you know, just it's just not a good practice. Let GHGC work through the issues and try to broadly through the community. And then, then let's try to fix the problem. Was I, you know, said, is anybody of this thing got built and it got converted to short-term rentals? I wouldn't be happy either, but I also don't think it's right to just target one. Is that on that?
Okay. I'll just repeat what I said earlier. This isn't past, this isn't targeting one piece of land. It's a consistent policy we've been following for a number of years when there's multifamily developments that requires a conditional use permit. We've made the same request. So we could not make the request here and that would be kind of picking winners and losers, I would say. So I think this is consistent with past practices. Anyway.
Right.
Sorry. Can you, you're out, Robert, can you please, Matt, stop this? I haven't got a right to speak at the moment. You won't hold on, you're not, you don't have a right to. Jennifer, you were on the, you weren't here at the beginning of the discussion. I just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to comment.
I am actually in agreement with our co-chairs of GHGC here, but the other point that I would make about this is that these letters of objection are, or sorry, these letters of support, letter of non-objection, excuse me, are to some degree often a matter of choice. And I feel like if we start putting restrictions on things, it kind of punishes the people who do come forward and fight for community approval or seek, sorry, not fight for, but seek community approval for their projects. I think that it could have a deleterious effect on having people come forward and talking to the community about their projects. And in this one in particular, I would like to give some kudos to Z Architects for they did make some pretty substantial changes to this project based on communities part when they first brought it up, looking for a letter of non-objection. So I just, I appreciate that process. I appreciate things that they did to meet neighbor concerns they did not have to do. So anyway, that's what I have to say about that.
Okay. Any other comments?
I I've been around for seeing a few letters be proposed before this body. And I must admit, these are the first times I've watched the amendment process work in land use the way, the way it did. And it was a, it was interesting to see how we took the, what, what the petitioner brought forward and we added a amendment. We added a condition to our non-objection as, as a community. And it was a, it was an interesting way of packaging this letter of non-objection. I don't know what my point is here, but I'm kind of trying to understand it a little better. How, how we came here to a letter of non-objection that, that the petitioner did not ask for. And, yeah.
So we'll go to segue for our discussion later.
Yeah, I think, I think so. Looking forward to, to hearing about it in our, in our rules discussion later as well.
Matt, go ahead.
So, so was something like this done for the Powder Run developments or for the developments of offices or similar letter of objection without any sort of conditions?
For Powder Run, there was a letter, I think we actually, I think it was actually a letter of approval with a set of conditions. I can't remember exactly how we structured it, but yes, there were a set of conditions. That was also a conditional use permit request.
But no, no short-term.
No short-term rentals, yes.
And they're the same.
The the, the situation was slightly different at the Glacial City Development, that wasn't a conditional use permit. That was a development master plan, which is different. And I do not believe there was, I know there was discussion of, I don't think there was anything from land use that suggested a no short-term rentals. But we can, we can obviously vote on this as a, as a group. I'm tempted to wait about one more minute to see if we get all five members. Right, go ahead.
Thank you. I am, I'm trying to recall is, is how this came about on the property. I remember the original property being developed with the two townhouses on it. And then, once that piece of property was complete, then all of a sudden there was these other three units that were added to the property. I don't recall, if I recall, there was originally two buildings pushed way, way back and no, no mention of any other development on the property. We didn't place any conditions on the original because it was within their right of course. And, and I'm hoping someone could correct me if I, if I recall this wrong. But then the other three units have been added as an addition to their project. And this is where then we are stepping in as a community and placing these conditions. So not on the original project, like could have happened, but like if some of the other projects that are ongoing right now were to probably come before the land use committee, my, my my feeling is that they would also have additional conditions placed on there potentially.
Actually, I would, I would ask Ellen if she can clarify. Was the original plan to do two phases of department for seven units?
While you were talking, I was, I was trying to go back into our files to see if if Joe Bell, the original Joe Bell project was called Joe Bell Phase One, or if it was just called Joe Bell. So if you'll bear with me, talk amongst yourselves and I'll dig into the job files and see what it says.
Thank you, Ellen. Guy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, you know, and I mentioned earlier Jennifer did too, you know, it does can worry me that, you know, this might push people away from requests coming forward with their projects and you know, that is a concern. For sure, I, I do appreciate the, you know, the history there and, and with these Powder Run condos and, you know, statement in there similar to that and I, I just wonder if the petitioner could have pulled this after hearing this was added to it. I don't know if that would have made a difference or if land use would have went ahead and made a, maybe a letter of objection if he did that, but I don't, I don't really know the process of if somebody does seek a letter of non-objection, if it's not what they're looking for, they could pull it. Is that ever happened or, because it didn't happen in this one, you know, there was no the petitioner didn't disagree with it or, or pull the petition request.
Ellen.
Um, I'm looking at in our job files and our, the original project is just called Bell Townhouses. So, um, I think what happened was that it just started out as those townhouses and then later the client came back to ask for more. And then we brought the file forward and, and called the new project Joe Bell Phase Two. So that happens a lot, like we'll do a project and then years later they'll come back and ask for more.
Thank you. Recognize that Jennifer arrived a few minutes ago and I believe Brianna is now online. Brianna, are you able to hear us? Brianna is still unmuted. I think that's her phone number. It is, yeah. Oh, there you are.
Yeah.
Hi, Brianna.
I heard you, Mike. Thank you very much. I am definitely listening in for the last few minutes on my way. Thank you.
I'm going to move on. You already said a couple of things.
Yeah, yeah. So
So again.
Yeah, so again, so if you go through with and put it in this conditional short-term and then you do it for the next one, and then the next problem, and then the next problem. You could effectively introduce the concept of grandfathering everybody else and then effectively, could effectively start banning short-term rentals for anything new. And eventually establish a concept of grandfather to the community, which I don't know if the community is in favor of. And I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's fair. So again, this is like a slippery slope. And I would suggest you not go down it and once you try to get on policy.
Okay, thank you. So we have never see any more questions or comments, so I suggest we move to a vote. Can we do a roll call vote, please? Do we have a motion? Sorry, the motion, let's have a motion.
I will make a motion for the, I move to uh, let's see, keeping this in the positive, I will move to, actually at, I'll ask the chair for a little advice here. I can move to accept this as it's.
I think the motion is to approve the letter of non-objection that's presented.
As presented.
Yeah, and then there can't be amendments.
All right.
So second that motion?
Okay, a motion moved and seconded. Are there any discussion on this motion? Or amendments to the motion?
I would like to amend the motion.
That's why I expected. Go ahead.
I would like to say that, oh, sorry, I would like to make the motion that we, or sorry, make the amendment that we remove SBR restriction requirement from this letter of non-objection.
Okay, go here a second. I'm hearing a second to that amendment, so the amendment doesn't, doesn't get moved. So we're back to the main motion. Any other comments on the main motion? We'll go vote.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What is the result of a no vote?
Result of a no vote is that we don't generate anything.
We generate nothing.
Yes. So then we have a, an interesting challenge because we would be passing forward nothing and LUC has asked us to do something. So I assume we just pass forward the minutes from LUC. That's what we present, the, the extract that minutes, that's what would be presented to
And
for potential introduction tonight.
And then in the process, so the petitioner moves to planning and zoning and says there is no action positive or negative coming from the community.
GBOS, that's correct. It could be from LUC. This is, this would kind of be an ugly situation, but there are plenty of ugly situations, so that's not necessarily.
I don't think it's entirely without precedent because this does happen on occasions and almost happened here. If we didn't have this special meeting, we would not have that at time. So the only reason we're talking about this is because of the time.
Because of the times.
Yes.
But there was a, there was a motion and an action which passed, what, 24-0 from LUC. So there is a community statement, it just hasn't come through GBOS if we do not pass this. Margaret.
I think that if LUC and GBOS disagree, like the fact that you are meeting and you are voting, then that means that both decisions go forward.
Right, which would be nothing.
Which would be something quick to write in the next hour.
Yes.
But in any case, just to point out, like, this is a meeting and so it is taking place. And I, you know, not to split hairs that we're going to have time to split later, but you know, the, the potential disagreement between land use committee and GBOS over making an amendment to this letter of non-objection would also be tricky to figure out and adequately describe so that PNC had an opportunity to understand it.
Again, it's all good material for our discussion right in a bit.
This is an interesting test case for some of the other things, for sure.
Okay, so let's move forward to roll call vote now. We have a, we have a motion on the table.
Okay, Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
I'm Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan? Brianna Sullivan?
Yes, thank you.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes for. Thank you. Okay. Now we can move on to item number two. Update of GBOS rules and procedures. So there's it's a, it's an even broader discussion that it's a, it's a, it's basically our rules and procedures, which includes how committees are structured, how we run meetings, the operating procedures themselves. Before we jump into the details, should say something about the process we're going to have to follow here. So any changes to our rules and procedures has to go through a 30-day publication period. So we can't make any changes ourselves directly. What we can do is discuss, what I'd like to do is run the rest of this, this part of the meeting as if it's a work session. People can make motions, but I think it's more valuable just to get ideas out and start discussing them. And then maybe take from that some actions for small groups to draft parts of the, a new document. And then when we have something that we, we're comfortable publishing to the public for comments, we then do that. And I think we have a 28-day period where it has to be published. We can then take action to vote yes or no. So we could make, we could make decisions to, make decisions as a group to sort of go and work on bits and bring it together. And let something be related by Margaret, for example. But we can't actually vote on accepting new rules and procedures today. We have to go through the publication process. So the earliest anything could happen is if we agree on everything now, we get it drafted, published tomorrow and then, and then potentially vote on it next month, but it's likely it'll take longer. Okay, so that's the general process discussed first. So we can take these in order. Let's start with the current committees of GBOS. We have, she'll let, Margaret or Carl, would you like to just talk through the, just list what we currently have as committees?
Sure. Let me see if I can find that page. Committees, all right, so under GBOS, there's the land use committee, the trails committee, the public safety advisory committee, the cemetery committee, and now the housing and economic committee in, in those areas. So that, that housing and the economic committee would need to be added. The cemetery community at this point is dormant. It has become an area-wide power, so it's not really funded by Girdwood taxpayers only funded by the whole municipality. So we have those committees there. And so, you know, you, you guys are pretty familiar with which each one does there, but yep, that's, that's where we're at right now with committees.
Okay, so the minimum, the action we have to perform is to add, add in the extra committee.
Correct, so that in the housing and economic committee.
And then we have, and we have two types of committees currently in our rules and procedures. We have ad hoc committees who are there for a particular purpose. It's like a project. And then we have standing committees. Well, we could almost argue the cemetery was a, was an ad hoc, just a long-running ad hoc for a particular purpose. So I think the others, the others are standing committees. Okay. The topic of PSAC has come up multiple times of whether it should continue or not continue. So let me not make a decision now. It might be worth just having a short discussion about that. Now, still, we see a role for all of these committees.
Well, start on that one.
Please go ahead.
So I did talk to Tommy about this and it was my understanding that we were going to put off any decision about this until the June meeting because of his absence. And so I, I mean, I told him that based on what I, what we discussed in our last meeting. But, but we can still, I suppose, vote off some options. And one of the ones I talked to Tommy about was switching to quarterly or switching to having a, like a liaison, basically a PSAC liaison. But since then, I've talked to other community members who are interested in serving on the board. And so it seems to me like maybe quarterly would be a good step. And then if it's, it doesn't seem like it's, I mean, it might be a half step and then if we don't need it, we could then if it is on position. Or, or sorry, not that we don't need it, but if we're finding it's mostly dormant, then we could consider doing that. It, it does seem like there's truly universal consensus, I think, that we, doesn't, that it doesn't necessarily need to meet every month. And I know many, several of us here have had the experience of being on it and it was often difficult to get quorum and get people interested in going or having an agenda that was worse taken the time for and Margaret's timing for it and doing the minutes. So that's what I'd say.
Yeah, so necessarily not making a decision now, we're just discussing it in the context of the look.
Brianna, I would just chime in that everything Jennifer just stated is pretty much the synopsis of where we are and what, what the committee's leader, let's say, Tommy, historically feels where it should go and what those ideas are, kind of a collaboration of the ideas we've heard so far. So it is so far in our
So, and it is so far in our minutes to be discussed in June, but for editing this document, it should probably stay in here. Even though, like, the cemetery is probably staying, it's dormant for a while.
Should the, should Public Safety include Fire Department?
Yes. Yep, and then they, they've naturally just come into the fold for the years, and so but in the language here, it's not addressed as, but they attend meetings, and because there's just such a, there's such overlap there between the two safety agencies.
But my, my feeling is while we redraft this, we should have a purpose statement for every committee and say what the purpose is.
And staff is supportive of a quarterly meeting. And honestly, if we see a strong group that really wants to be interactive, then it may go back to monthly, but we just lost interest, and so we were setting up for meetings that, that need to have forums, so it's just sucking up time.
Are we missing anything in terms of the committees of the five we have now?
Like, I like the idea, kind of obvious, to merge Public Safety to include Fire, because the other ones are becoming lots of work and different needs in our community. So they could be merged, and then we can all help each other with the different tasks.
Yeah, it might be actually smart that maybe somebody from the PSAC works with the supervisor to attend the the nonprofit board meetings. So there's these two people tackling that, and, you know, be, be an advisory body in that sense.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. No, I, I just wanted to let you know, I do agree with moving to quarterly, I think, you know, at some point that things change, and, and with your, you know, their contract seems pretty solid, but we never know what, what the future brings, and, and with their staffing and whatnot, so I'd hate to see it go away, I think it definitely serves a purpose, and you know, addressing the, the fire station as well is a, is a good plan, so I agree with those recommendations.
Yep, so looking at our description of Public Safety, I'm wondering if, since, I, I'm wondering how much we actually need to change about it, besides adding in Fire, then the last sentence says that it's operating in accordance with procedures adopted by the committee, so I, I believe, as I'm reading that, GBOS can simply recommend that they switch to quarterly meetings, and then see how it goes, but I don't know that we need to actually change any of the verbiage there.
I don't think we need to change the schedule. It's, as I said, I think, personally, I feel all should have a clear purpose statement. It's clear the purpose of, should the, each of the committees, I think that'll help with clarity. We can, we can pull that into line, reducing basic language, so. Okay.
New guy here. The makeup of the officers of PSAC are appointed by GBOS or brought in by the committee?
Appointed by GBOS, so that's a good segue into another discussion about committees, about how they're structured, and how we, how we have five or six differently, well, four different ways of doing things.
Yeah.
And there is definitely an argument for rationalizing that. So we have, Land Use is a separate issue, so we should put Land Use off to one side. But Trails is a, you know, community-wide, one person, one vote, they self-collect offices. The Cemetery Committee is the same, a very small, PSAC and GHCC are both appointed. My sense is, well, when we originally did it for PSAC, the main justification was we were concerned about, we were kind, well, I suppose we were concerned because it was a new service, and we weren't, the police service was a new service, and there was a degree of contention, it only passed by three votes, and we expected something that might be kind of become a little bit of a, a little bit of a difficult forum for people to express their, their thoughts on what's important. Unless there was some degree of, of kind of, what's the word, curation, I suppose, at the beginning, it's not proved to be that at all. So my sense is indeed, you know, this is, this is about how we set them up, or necessarily how we describe them in here, by how we set up these committees, my, my opinion is, you know, PSAC and GHCC, we should either have all of our committees, or we should have them all basically self-organized to some extent. I think there's a, having, having some of one type and some of the other is just problematic.
Is PSAC appointed for a multi-year term or a single-year term?
It's not really well-defined. It's meant to be multi-year term, but in practice, it's people who've been appointed until they resign. We haven't gone through it, sort of, haven't actually advocated three-year terms, or two-year terms, and had a revolving process, we haven't for anything in the committees yet.
I have something, and Kyle had a clarification, I think, but. Just, I was just gonna add, it might be silly to say, but when someone's interested in PSAC, they apply through staff, and then we find out at a meeting.
Okay.
One thing with PSAC is that all the committees, the PSAC might deal with some very sensitive issues, and so having a group that is defined, that people can go to, has proven to be efficient in dealing with it, sometimes they don't want to talk staff, sometimes they don't want to talk directly to the safety officials, so they want to go, and so having people who they know are serving on the committee, whereas like Trails Committee, Trails Committee has like an executive body that helps to run the meeting, but any person is a member, and so it's nice to have sort of a defined body that, you know, is led by a, a chair and, and things along those lines, because we've dealt with some sensitive issues, and the chair or the, or a member of the body really helped to facilitate that discussion, so. And a lot of times, they don't want to have the meetings, they don't have the meeting discussion, so we have to work and try to work things through in, in different ways.
Can I ask a paraphrase question? How does this actually work then? This isn't, this isn't about executive sessions, it's about just one or two board members being involved in sort of a process outside of meetings?
Yeah, so usually one or two persons, and then we'll bring it back, and we'll distill it, basically sterilize it, and then explain it back to the committee as to something that was going on, and try to neutralize anybody being identified, and then, and, and then deal with it, if we had to at the community level, especially if they had to deal with something related to a lack of service that they're experiencing. But a lot of times, the complexity of the issue may be something that we are gonna help them, and then try to communicate to the police. So sometimes they want to come to that PSAC committee to use that to get where they want to go, because they're afraid to talk to the police directly, so.
Isn't that similar to, if you had executive officers, they would be performing the same role, because it's not something that happens within the committee itself, it's something that's happening outside of it?
It could be that way, yeah, but it's good to have, you know, a very defined system, you know, and I think people take trust in what the board supervisors appoint, so there's, there's that to that aspect too, so.
And to build on that, I've had, I actually give the performance about exactly that kind of situation where somebody wasn't comfortable bringing something up in, in situations that can involve, you know, vulnerabilities, or as you say, an experience of lack of service, that can be a very hard thing to bring out in terms of a public. And I think that our current structures are natural outgrowths of our purposes, and so really disagree with trying to make everything work the same. LUC works the way it does for a reason, Trails works the way it does for a reason, I think Public Safety works the way it does, not only for reason, but also I think that some of the people that are motivated to be on it have spoken to me about wanting to be a safe place for people. And the other feedback I've heard is that it's super important to people to have a female on that committee, and so I think it does help to have kind of defined role, it's not very big. It, it helps to know who to go to, it's, in fact, and I think the small size of that is also a benefit, that's, that small size has a, has a purpose as well. That even when stuff does need to be talked about within the committee, the committee can choose to go into executive session, and you have a grand total of three people talking about it, if there were a need for that. So it really reduces the, the degree to which somebody's personal issue with police or fire or tragedy or violence is spread throughout a community discussion.
I like, I like the points about the, you know, we can tie it to purpose, describe it, describe it purpose, and that's where the structure. There is a, sorry.
Quick question.
Yeah, yeah.
Did, did I hear a general consensus, and we're gonna, I think this is a quick question, we're gonna just keep Cemetery as a sleeper, or does it make sense to have that, given the, the understanding now of that area-wide power? That seems like it's not necessarily our province as much?
It's, it's an interesting problem, because you can have an area, you can have an area-wide power and have service area power. Service area power just then has to be something addition to the area-wide power, defined as additional service. So it doesn't actually preclude us from doing something for cemetery, it's now, I don't know that we want to, as a, as a service area power, and definitely if the, if the, if the bonds are passed, I think we'd be having a very different discussion then, because clearly there'd be funding source allocated to the area-wide service. We don't have that. So one of the questions is how do we, how do we move ahead with the needs of this community when we don't have the support of the aggregate voters overall, are there other funding models, are there other opportunities? There's a bunch of questions like this that we could still pursue separately, we may not want to, but I think that question of whether we pursue them separately is still a question. Now, we can decide that at GBOS level, and then keep the, keep the cemetery or not, based on that decision. Or we can, I think, the committee take the lead there, I don't, I don't have a strong opinion, by the way, but I think that's something we should address.
Sorry, just to clarify, I didn't mean to interrupt Breonna, but are you, are you saying then that if we're not certain to the answers to that, we should keep Cemetery Committee for now?
I think unless we, yeah, I think if we decide that we don't want to do it separately, and we want to, for example, let go of the cemetery power that we have as a service area, either formally or in practice, then I don't think we should continue the Cemetery Committee anymore, but absent that hard decision by GBOS, I think there is definitely a strong argument for keeping it. Because there is, there are some questions that need to be answered over the next few quarters.
I would just add that an idea was floating in meetings too, that maybe this would work, there's something around cemetery someday, and if we wanted to update it, but then have to revise it, you know, we could add that statement as of this spring because of the bond failing, but maybe with new administration and state funding, it would be built someday in the next decade, and then we might have the contractors and service area doing plowing and things like that, but it's still managed by area-wide, like Tommy's mentioned, many times, a friends of friend of, I'll let a committee work.
If it was a problem, it would not be a committee, it would be a non-prov external to local government.
So if I was updating this now, I would add that at the end, because then you could, next time it's revised, delete it, or delete it entirely, or know that it changed, evolves, and.
So just again, sum, summing up here, this sounds like something you can then take out to the community in the next month or so for when we do make our decisions. Right, and I, and I understand this correctly, okay, what do you guys think? Do we leave this here, or do we, or if it's like, like, we have got library, for example, you know, we have, we have plenty of models. People that made the clinic happen, didn't happen by the boss.
I think the skate park's not a good example.
Yes.
I'm just trying, I know, so, this is another way we could do it. We can actually make the Cemetery Committee kind of sunset what it is, the standing committee, and have an ad hoc committee just looking at the funding options based on, you know, the experience of the bond last year, and have it as a, you know, one-year or two-year entity. And that's it, so its job is to look at, pass forward that bond has gone, and that's its ring.
That actually in big rate interest. Because it's a set
Right, yeah.
Yeah, set, set tunnel.
I like that idea, because there is a kind of a big question mark right now, so to have a very close goal.
So we basically define that project as being investigating, or finding funding sources through the development of the cemetery, then go through the options, okay? Thanks. GHCC is not on the list, but that's also a appointed board, so we should have that discussion now as well. You comfortable with that model?
I think so, based on how, how it began. Very, it's a subcommittee of GBOS.
So we've had some problems, maybe not problems, but the, we have a number of people who wanted to be part of that, applied to be part of that, and because we have the most restrictive rules, both PSAC and GHCC, the most restrictive rules we have for any of our committees, human that we can go to, and that excludes, that excludes some residents. It's residents who don't vote for any reason, which mostly are people citizens, yeah. Well, citizens, but it also can exclude other people who haven't registered for a reason, or can't, or whatever. And I suppose for other committees where basically you just have to be a resident or something, or one or the other, could ask to be part of them, so that's one thought. So, I mean, a very practical example is well, from the result, isn't, isn't your citizen, and isn't a voter in registered voting, so you could not sit on that committee. Whether you should or shouldn't, maybe a separate question, but we are excluding more people from these two committees, you know, from other speakers, the membership criteria.
From a staff perspective, we would actually consider simplicity with this, and, you know, like the land use requirements is the same I think for the Trails Committee requirements, but, you know, basically it's a, you're a landowner, representative nonprofit, or, or business, and you know, and those just make it easier. Public Safety, it's really important that we try to get somebody every year from, on the committee from Aliasca, because they're such a large component of
Being an officer of the House.
For, for Public Safety, yeah, because they're such a large call for the service, so we always wanted to have a relationship with them, because we're always planning around their big events, so. So, you know, I think it's good to have simplicity there, so that we know, like, okay, who can be on these committees? You know, we can look at that way, that's just a perspective, mostly probably mine, that I feel is important with these committees.
It could be modeled after Land Use and Trails and Cemetery, or it could follow the Public Safety Advisory Committee, which is the most appropriate. Currently, we do it under the latter case, partly because we, we made the, we did that for the Hope Hills issue, which was very contentious, problematic, so we follow that same policy, I don't think, I don't think the same conditions apply. So I become comfortable in voting out. All right.
Just to point out that registered, registered voters in the GBSA don't include Crow Creek.
Yes.
As is the case for Land Use, so that is, you know, a vocal part of the population.
So Land Use is special because it's functioning as a community council.
Correct.
So it has to include everyone within the community council borough or boundary, which includes other group. Anything which is to do with obviously spending service area taxpayer money can be restricted to those who live within this area.
Right.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be restricted to registered voters.
Right, correct.
Really quick, I, I do recall us discussing the voter requirement, registration requirement in the last year or two, and I do agree that it, it doesn't seem to completely serve the purpose, it can be, you can make it more equitable and representative of the community at large by urgent, but not required.
Just to build off of what you're saying, I'm sorry, I think that that makes sense also, given the the kismet and interrelationship between GHCC and LUC, like, there, there's, there is some overlap, and they are right now, thanks to these co-chairs working very closely together, and so it makes sense to have the same membership requirements as the voting, that's what we're talking about, right, is, so that the membership requirements for GHCC, if I'm understanding what we're talking about correctly, would be the same as the voting requirements for LUC, is that correct?
Effectively, yeah, I mean, that's at least one idea.
Right, just.
That does take away the, the option of saying there has to be somebody in there with certain, certain characteristics that you know, a mentor, which we did do when we set this up originally. But maybe that doesn't make sense anymore, maybe expanding out to be broad enough, inherently.
All right, so now I have another question. All right, so now I have another question that's, I mean, I think that, I'm not sure it does get rid of that requirement, like I know we have an opening coming up for hopefully long-term renter. I would like to see that long-term renter be able to be from anywhere in the valley area, anyone that meets the criteria. So I I don't know that it does preclude having um some certain representatives. I really don't want to lose a long-term renter perspective on G H C C if that's possible.
Yeah, I agree. So that means the um, to get the two model we have are basically, there's an executive committee, which is job, their job is to run the meetings and liaise with staff and make sure stuff is all. Um, but the voting, people voting in the meeting is anyone who turns up against the broad criteria associated with good. That's not the case with P S A C, it's four people only. The supervisor under some circumstances to break a tie. Um, G H E C is only seven members of G H C C that supervises, um, and nobody else, nobody else can vote. And, you know, limited times, some people, you know, maybe they're not welcome to speak. So it's not quite the same as land use or trails. Um, so that's, to me, that's the core question of is, should this be a, should these meetings be basically organized by a small group of people? Um, by a group of named people, it's an executive committee, vote to everybody, it's four unequal participants. Or do we want a um, uh, situation where a named set of individuals are four participants, and then everyone else is a member of the public who does that voting? That's kind of the structure. And I think the argument is that with P S A C, there is a reason why we might want to go down the the second path of having defined individuals. Make decisions on that body, make decisions to advise us. The question is, does that also apply to G H C C? Oh, sorry, there's no other question.
So with G H C C, in terms of having, you know, membership requirements, and I want to be as old as, I don't think anybody's excluded. It's just a question of having the right cross-section of people that we feel have different opinions that can help represent this aspect of the community. I think you've seen it here. We don't read on different perspectives, but the declines in this cost, like down to the land issue where it's like, we got buried out of me. We're making votes and down decisions, not a so important decision in the community. To that end, because it's generally a seven of us. I, from a voting perspective, I think it should stay the way it is. Because we're the ones that are at the meetings, we're the ones that are having but off communications, off the side, able to communicate that independently from people outside the community. But I don't want someone that hasn't been to a meeting for four hours that decides to show up for a land decision that we've been talking about here, been talking about for summer numbers. And then all of a sudden, I get, I get out of voting because I get six people to walk into the room that haven't been present to meetings, that decided to downvote the people that have been. In order to find something done away in the community, I think that that the community as it's formed right now, it won't serve its intended purpose. So I wouldn't go ahead and change the voting. You know, we need to expand membership a little bit, but I think everybody in the community pretty much has an option. So to be involved, you know, like what happened when we had the backfill for Tomas's position, right? The only person that put in was Larry. It wasn't like everybody keep wanting to the the door that's been committed, right? So and now with, you know, program. Right, we'll see, we may have forty people or we may have one, right? So so, so I, I, and, you know, I don't think we should be changing. And and by the way, because we're proposing everything that's coming up to land agency committee anyway, it's getting brought by the community. So if they want to tell us they're not, they can tell us we're not. They're waiting. So I think the process is 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 fine, and I think it no one ever exemplified itself when we had to do the land thing for the H O B. Because when Meg, when Meg Zalatell, you know, basically pulled the rabbit out of the hat before Christmas, you know, basically, P D C C got their shit together and got the things organized to get stuff done, to get into H O B player, you know, basically up through land use, up through G B O S, get it done. Right? And so I just want to, you know, that's just my, that's my.
Good, Guy.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, when we put that together, I I agree with Matt, when we put that together, I thought it was a a committee to establish, to come up with ideas and make recommendations to land use committee where the general public would could weigh in on it at that point. And so I I thought the structure was, you know, the voting structure within the committee was working as far as pushing those ideas to land use where if the public can have a a voice then on those decisions. So I I do like the way it was, it's structured. Just because it allows the committee to to develop and work, and and I think that's the point of it is, you know, to come up with ideas and and present those. And and so I I think that structure works well for that.
Thank you. So Guy, you brought a couple of interesting points there, one which is, um, I think you said that you saw G H C C as bringing things to land use. Um, but they're actually advisory to us, G B O S, as is L U C. So um, I think this this is kind of a nice segue into what land use actually is and how we can clarify that. Because the purpose of land use, we're in this weird situation compared to the rest of uh municipality where we have an elected body that represents a community, nobody else does. Strictly, nobody else does. Um, Glen Alps might do, but not really. Um, but we have a, we have an elected body as well as what we typically, that be a community council, and community councils are outside of the municipality. They're associated with, but they're independent nonprofits. So we have this system that kind of sometimes works and kind of sometimes doesn't work, uh, where you do have exactly the problems that Matt just described of um six or ten people can turn up to a L U C meeting, have no history in a topic, but a very particular self-interested point of view and effectively carry the vote for L U C. So it's sometimes it's representative of community, it's often representative of just the best organized the best organized interest group that happens to turn up on a given day. So it's, although it's advisory to us, we have this kind of interesting challenge and we have to respect it, but at the same time, it shouldn't be telling us what to do. Uh, because we are elected, and it isn't, we are elected by everybody in the community. Uh, and even the, you know, even at the most, at the, at the um meetings where the chair and vice chair and everybody are elected, it's typically only, you know, twenty people or so are turning up, as opposed to the eight hundred or so of G B O S elections. Um, so we have a different, we we also within the municipality, we're part of the municipal structure, um, and typically a community council isn't. So there's these interesting challenges of how we get this to work, and we've definitely seen multiple cases recently where, including potentially earlier on today, where this has been a very challenging relationship. And like people's thoughts on what we're doing well, what we're not doing well, how we can clarify and make things better. Still beat the um, beat our sort of obligations.
Question over here, okay? I believe uh the Housing and Economic Committee has suggested the the schedule, their their meeting scheduled now to be more in alignment. Is that kind of better flow? So they set the first Monday of the month, you know? Which really puts it into probably a a nice progression as far as moving through land use and moving into Girdwood giving people time to research what's what's coming up, so.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, you explained that really well, and being in the community for a little while, uh, it's definitely be become apparent that things take a while, even if they're on the right track. That if if something goes to land use twice and us twice, G B O S twice, and then we disagree on something very minor but significant because of exactly the reason Matt may previously mentioned, that we have to go back and wait for another meeting, which can take an entire month to get whatever that item is moving. And if it needs to go to the assembly next, which it most likely does, uh, it just doesn't seem effective. So I would hope there's a way that we don't have to do that requirement for things that aren't incredibly substantial. And I remember the last time it was discussed in the meeting basically because of very specific land use issues and why that committee was formed years ago. And it was something Margaret brought up, someone at a meeting, it's in the book, but it was because of specific land use details. Uh, I don't have an example right now, but I understood why it was there, but for things like a certain sentence. It could be meaningful sentence, but it was just unfortunate for everyone's time, the staff time and uh resources.
All right.
Did you say Guy?
Yeah, Guy, go ahead, Guy.
Thanks. Yeah, you know, I I guess, I, you know, what I was saying, I mean, it goes to land use, it allows that public comment process, you know? Uh, you know, in the end, it's going to come to us for a vote. And and then you're right, it's tricky because, you know, if we do modify anything, then it starts to process over again and it creates a a really long, um, you know, a it just, yeah, it delays things, but I I do still see it as, you know, I like how they change their meeting dates and they're able to flow through land use. And you're right that, you know, you can, you can, I've, you know, seen it with trails and land use, you can flood those meetings and and um you know, decisions can be made from, you know, a group of people that aren't typically there, but you know, I guess it's, it it's messy, but it it does allow it to, you know, reach a broader public by through that process. And so, yeah, you know, I I think the the way the housing committee is set up, you know, I I do like that. The way it's established and how the committee members vote on it, and then we can let the public speak, but um yeah, I don't know what the easy solution is for when it gets to us and we um, they're, you know, are elected to represent the the people of Girdwood, make minor changes than um, I think that's what you're saying, Mike, that that trying to address that issue as well, right?
I think there are several issues here. Um, one of them is the scope of what, so we're not, we're not general. We're not elected or our role as elected officials isn't completely general, it's limited to uh the service area, both geographically and service area functions. So and land use is meant to be more like a community council that can generally comment on anything it chooses to. So while we have, we have some of those, some of those community council powers kind of pushed upon us as a de facto community council, that we use land use as a as reflective of the general um of the one person, one vote principle, which a community council could follow. Um, but there are still things which are absolutely fall within our responsibility. So uh, so I'll do a thought experiment. Let's say we we discuss a budget and land use decide that they want to have no money um this year for police, or they want to triple the fire department budget. Um, do we have to follow that? Or do we, how do we, how would we cope with a situation like that, a land use just comes in and says we want something completely different? I hope that everyone appreciates that that's our job, not land use's job. But it's actually, there are other topics as well, which are all, so issues such as, you know, the spending of taxpayer money on services locally. It's the job of G B O S. Land use can have an opinion, but it's our opinion, and we do not have any obligation to follow that. We may do, and often we would, um, but it's not something that land use makes the decision on that we have to rubber stamp. And there've been a number of cases recently where um we've been put in a position of basically being told by members of the public and even members of the board that our job is to do whatever land use tells, but not quite in so many words, but in practice. And that is not uh, that is not our task, that is not our purpose. Uh, and it's a, again, it's a, it's a misunderstanding of the way things are set up, it's a misunderstanding of the purpose of our. So I guess the question is, can can anyone, you know, can we, as a as a body, can we come up with a way of making this clearer and setting up procedures to avoid these kind of unnecessary conflicts? There are unnecessary conflicts under circumstances. For example, I think the example we had earlier of the uh of the letter of non-objection was something where that absolutely falls under land use's responsibility. And we have an obligation to liaison land use and come up with either an agreed single solution or also our two sets of recommendations. Uh, but there are many other areas which are not like that.
Is there a, any reason to um kind of differentiate how items are moved from, let's say, a land use committee or a trails committee up moved up to moved to G B O S as opinions as opposed to action items? This is kind of what I'm I'm starting to hear, that there are, there are certain items that are not that 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 they're going to be looking, they're sending us an opinion to advise us on the vote, that then we're going to take and advise the Anchorage Assembly.
Or other bodies.
Or other bodies. And and um, this might be, there probably are some it probably gets a little complicated though, if we start trying to differentiate what's the difference between an opinion and an action item. And, you know, do we want to go down and add another three pages of rules to to what's going on? But I do like the idea of being able to come out of trails committee meeting with a with an opinion for G B O S to consider, to add into their letter of non-objection for a project that we're it could be something that also would work well with land use committee.
I I disagree with your characterization. I think that it is not fair and neither fair nor accurate with some of the um uh, issues that we've had between us and L U C. But this this one tonight was interesting because I find myself on the opposite side of where I'm used to of arguing for what L U C said, and I I did feel kind of a little bit like mobbing sentiment. Came down on, it's coming down on certain landowners and as we've already stated, it was, you know, I thought that we should at least throw back a different consideration in if time had not been a very, as much of a bearable as was. So speaking of that, um, the two things, one is, one is the thought experiment, I think, is inaccurate because uh, police and fire isn't L U C province, so if they start coming at us with that stuff, it's like, that's actually not your business. Um, and and I'm totally comfortable with that. Uh, but I am also comfortable with them moving their, you know, opinions forward. But in that case, I don't think our rules and procedures is triggered because that's not their province. But um, I was just trying to look in, you, this is our, this is from our rules and procedures, right? I believe up at the near the top, uh, of the very start of our rules and procedures, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my copy, and I can't, now I can't find the board packet, of course. But anyway, I'm really, really close to the top, there's just something about how we're consensus-based. Uh, that that our setup and and our relationship with L U C is based on a a consensus-based approach to government and to governing. Um, I thought it was at the very beginning of our rules and procedures, like all the way up, there we go. But now, and now I'm skimming up, I can be able to find it. Um, but it ties into what I put in the name packet. Uh, where uh, the foreaker group talked to us about different ways of looking at how decisions are made, whether it's advocacy or inquiry. And I feel like we fell a little bit into competing advocacy sometimes between L U C and and G B O S, but this setup was very much designed for, there you go. It right in there. Oh, sorry, guys, I'll I'll look for that part later. But anyway, this this, uh, thank you. If I look at that, I'll be able to find it, but I'm going to keep typing and then see the floor, somebody else, and I'll look for it. Uh, but anyway, I like this idea of kind of approaching, trying to think of our community problems as as collaborative problems, something. And I think that that we could look at our own procedures and some of the things that got us into some issues here, like, for example, if we started off our discussion about things like what we wanted to say about Fulton Hills, if we started with what came from from L U C rather than writing our own and then saying, oh, well, it's close enough, don't worry about it. Like, if they've gone to all the trouble to talk about it and hash it out and. Like if they've gone to all the trouble to talk about it and hash it out and new business and old business, all that, I feel like we should give it the courtesy of starting with that and saying, okay, well, for these reasons and this reasons, and we've had this for five years now. We can say, uh, we're not sure that the folks who showed up that night fully considered this one and see. The other part that I know is in here is a thing about, uh, timeline. And so our, um, our rules and procedures around how much we have to agree with LUC is somewhat dependent on timeline, when it's time restrictive, right? There are different, there's a different protocol than when, so, so this concern about like, oh, it takes so long. It doesn't have to, if we have a, if we have a reason why it has to be done faster, we can do it faster. Um, and that is under when the two disagree and I'm so impressed with you. But I'll, I'll find it in a moment. Anyway, and now, um, I'll leave it at that for now.
May I chime in? Like,
Yeah, please.
When, just to wrap back to what Brian said, if there was a way to delineate them, so, and then with what Jennifer was saying, right now they're split into time necessities. Uh, but if there is a way to say in one of those or a, a third part of part C about if it was zoning or a applicant with a variance type thing, that is really the land use focus that I think not that's spoken. On their missions and hearing how they're midius.
Well, part of the problem is that we use the term land use when, um, what LUC is meant to represent is a, is a, well, effectively a community council, which is two purposes, right? Some of the one person, one vote functions of the community council and to allow um, people at Upper Hill Creek that are not part of our service area and don't contribute taxes, allow their voice to be part of the decision making process. So it's really those two distinct reasons why we have LUC the way we do. And I know, you know, there are, there are people in the community who've been trying to create a separate community council. There's an argument for that. I think it's a diminishing argument for, it actually dimensions good in many ways. But that's a, there's definitely an argument one can make. Um, but LUC really serves these two purposes. It's to allow Upper Creek to have a formal voice, um, and to, um, give that one person, one vote, um, model, which other community councils would have. So that's why we take it, that's why we, what LUC does is we take it in. And it's, yeah, although it's typically land use, it can actually be broad enough. But it, when it comes to issues that are within, as Jennifer said, if it's clearly within service area powers, then it's a responsibility of GBOS alone. And I don't think our, it's clear that our, we just do not delineate that clearly enough. There's language in there that basically says, if there's any disagreement, you have to go through this, uh, this other process, which I do not think is, uh, it's not right. And it's not the way the structure actually should work. Right?
Well, thank you. Um, there, there's also a, a third function of, of LUC and that is to, um, improve the efficiency of GB, GBOS meetings and the procedure moving through these meetings. And, um, that was one of the, one of the reasons that land use kind of was spun off in the, um, mid, late eighties was to, because the GBOS meetings were turning into six hour fairs. And, um, I think that, that it's something that, that we need to look at very carefully and work on reviving how to make the meetings more efficient for everyone. So how can we take the, the deliberation and the collaboration that comes out of a LUC meeting and move it efficiently through GBOS to get it moved into, moved to the assembly? But there, that is a, that is a, and, and it's the same for trails committee. And I think it's, it's the same with PSAC and GGC that it, um, it kind of comes here with the, in, in those meetings and in, in the committees, then minutia is what is being discussed in a lot of cases. And then here, building on, on that to create a, a statement coming from.
All right, um, I'm going to go to Matt then. I'm actually going to sit, you just segued quite nicely into, uh, the next question, which is about efficiency of our meeting. So, um, what I'm thinking, while we're discussing this, I'll let Matt speak and then perhaps we should move on to the, the questions around efficiency as well. And then we can cover anything and then go back if we need to.
So, since, since land use has gone by since the, maybe he's, I don't think, years, like, covers, but, so changing from somebody slightly, but I think, I, I think the land use committee is like a lot of vast problem. But as you wish, and there can be some indication of mob rule. And sometimes that mob can be absolutely right. Sometimes it may be wrong. So what I view GBOS's role in that regard with land use is to basically with a lot of transparency of saying, hey, lobby or hate mob, this is why this is good policy or this is why it's bad policy. Thank you. And so, and so sometimes it's telling people, no. Or you, you shouldn't be thinking about it this way. So I'll bring up the land use statement, what the three, uh, they decided to vote on the three parcels separately. The first two, three, and the third, yeah. Well, from a policy perspective, if we want a thousand. Uh, I, I'd say that's like a, that's a, that's potentially a terrible, we can make a terrible policy decision often. Because if we don't get any development, if we don't get any development, then we'll have a house. And so it's issues like that, when like they come forth with, okay, this will be things a large group. And then you just need to step back and say, is that reasonable? Really? And, uh, and I think that's how I kind of view the GBOS role relative to, to LUC. Um, sometimes you can be 100% agreements, but with them, but other times you should go through.
Um, so since Brian already introduced it, the question of efficiency came up. You know, what I hear from, I was definitely from other parts of that, you know, it's part two when anything comes through good, we've talked about it in sesame for months. Um, and, you know, our process requires at least, it's kind of requires this sort of old business, this new business model, which is not actually what the procedures expect. The procedures expect is, um, some items have a formal public hearing process. Um, and other items don't. Some items, other items will be introduced and then discussed. See if everything is discussed twice, which is even an introduction and then a discussion, it's a full discussion twice. Uh, and definitely a criticism I've heard, I've heard a lot, I'm sure everybody has, uh, within the community is, you know, what's the point of turning up to this meeting because you've been discussing three or four more times? At some point, a decision will be made, but it's never exactly clear when. Um, so if you haven't got the time to turn up to many, many meetings, uh, people feel excluded from the process. And I know the counter example is the more times we talk about it, the broader views we get, but that isn't what happens in practice. In practice, the same small number of people discuss it, the same things multiple times. And that ends up being a disincentive. So we have to find an appropriate balance. I would argue that we're not at the right place now. Um, but I think, you know, and other people might argue we are at the right place now, but I think this is a question we have to address. We could move back to what we actually say we're supposed to do, uh, which is have a, you know, have an introduction of material. And then we have a public hearing at a later, later point for some things. Um, or we can follow Robert's rules where we have a set of business. Sometimes we don't finish it, in case we bring back the follow meeting. But most of the time we introduce it, deal with it and move on. Uh, we could use consent agenda, which is another way of doing this, having a set of things, uh, which we, we introduce and we pass as single, single lines unless we choose to discuss individual things before. So there are a bunch of different tools out there. Um, and I think this is something we should, we should definitely discuss and make a deliberative, um, sort of deliberative decisions. Thoughts?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mike. And you explained it all very well. So I'll just go back to when Brian was saying, like, the ideal way that land use is, could be seen as sussing out the minutia before it gets here. A lot of their agenda and presenters do the same thing twice there, like you said, and here twice. So if we're both all at the meeting here, four long times, and I really appreciate the, the expediency of the introduction and that hearing and, and/or following what our rules and procedures say and not do new business, old business and allowing all of that, the time. And there might be a learning curve for a while, but having introduction and public hearing and then the option always of having a consent agenda. You don't have to do it, but it could always be an option.
Well, are we into consent agendas or I'm just, uh?
It mixed it.
Okay. Um, for efficiency of GBOS meetings, we would like to request that, um, GBOS considers, uh, capital purchases as a consent item. And then if they want to pull it, they, you know, a board member could, but, um, you know, a lot of times it takes us 35 days to get a approval on a purchase item that may only be 4,000 bucks. Um, and then by that our quote might be expired. It could be more expensive. So this thing from perspective, I know dealing with the fire department a lot and we have parks and rec needs. A consent agenda will work much more efficiently for us when we're doing those type of things.
I think, I think there's definitely an argument for having a set of criteria that something, well, basically being clear on what requires an introduction and then a later discussion for what we delve into meeting. Or these consent agenda is one way of doing. Um, but it could be introduced and acted on the same meter. It's reasonable. But there are some things where we want to have either, not necessarily even an initial discussion, but at least a, um, you know, an awareness that there's a big item coming. So it's, it's introduced and maybe just introduced rather than discussed in detail. And then the discussion happens at the, the later meeting, where there's full engagement or the opportunity to full engagement. But once that's happened, then it's, it can be. So at the moment, we don't do that. We have this full discussion multiple times, which is duplicative and I think a waste of many people's time. Times two, because we have it twice and twice that we've said, there's not one presentation for.
And to intro, I just want to add too, we've all probably heard it, that discourages public participation. They do not, many people do not want to listen to that in their free evening time or participate if they're in the room and then feel like, oh, I have to leave, I just have to leave. Um, that doesn't help participation.
Sitting here, probably those.
Yeah.
Not, not that's it. I didn't. Margaret?
Um, I just wanted to say that there has been significant feedback from people who have felt that things were getting pushed through too quickly. And so I think it really depends if you, what your perspective is on the item that is under discussion. If you prefer to have it be discussed 12 times or one time and done. So, um, I guess. I'm not disagreeing with the inefficiency of meetings at all. But I do think that as many times as I have heard people say, I've already heard everything that's been said at this meeting once or twice before. I've also, when things have moved more quickly, had a lot of conversation about whether or not the process was followed and followed and if everything has really been heard and if the group really understood what all the different intricacies were. And, you know, it's just, again, perspective.
If, if your experience is like mine, I've heard those contradictory opinions from the same individuals on different topics.
Or, yeah, I mean, I just think it comes down to whether it's something you want or don't want.
If it's something you don't want, typically.
It doesn't last long enough in talk.
More opportunity to like, okay, that's, if it's something you do want. Um, Guy? Do you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Go to the mute now.
I was muted, sorry. Um, thank you. Um, no, I think Al had a good point though with purchasing and, and, you know, I know there is some, there, I've seen concern with, you know, we kind of pick and choose what we hurry through, but, uh, I, I think purchasing is a good example of something that we don't need to talk about four times and have a presentation on, you know, unless it's a large purchase and, you know, maybe we could put a, uh, an upper limit on that. But I, I think for purchasing that is a perfect example of just consent and, and let the, you know, and let people get back to work.
Definitely building on that. Um, so I'm referring a little bit to the four acre training summary that I put up and the consent agenda was one of their ideas. But in line of that, I'm looking just at our agenda this evening and thinking, uh, what we sometimes haven't done, could do more of this, things like packaging all the minutes together and just doing them when it fell smoothly. And, and then again, I think it would take a little bit of training. We're not maybe used to pulling, you know, the idea of pulling an item like, I want to do, confirm all of those, but this one I have one question on. Uh, I mean, that's some practice that we could do. Uh, and I think in terms of that, in terms of another thing that we could change, um, and in this case, I'm speaking about me in particular, is trying to get things into the meeting packets sooner. And I know Margaret, it's not going to hate this idea. Um, uh, so, uh, but one of the things where we ran into trouble, one of the things that feels a little bit of a slippery slope to this when we're talking about, um, the multiple meetings and it sometimes feels like a lot, what feels like a slippery slope is we've had situations come up where things get, um, kind of introduced one way, and then by the time they come back next time, there are some pretty fundamental changes to them, you know, based on the stuff that has happened through the community conversation in the last month, but it's now almost sometimes a very different beast or there are different things. And I have felt sometimes like, wait a minute. Now that it's changed, now when do we get to talk about it? Right? And that was, it is something I just experienced in the, the last month. I thought, well, this is different than it was. This fundamentally, in my mind, fundamentally different. So I just think it's a slippery slope. I hear you and I, I, and I hear Ben, I am all about not having four meetings, you guys. I just can't even tell you much about that. But, uh, I think that there are a number of different approaches. So I would like to see us try to commit to getting our stuff in the meeting packets faster, not, and, and one thing I'd really like to see, and I don't know if this belongs in rules and procedures or not, is that we have to specifically vote to put something on the agenda fit or, or in the meeting packet, or excuse me. We have to vote to discuss a new proposed version of something if it shows up. Meeting, like, I don't, I don't like talking about something that has only been there for 15 minutes. And I was driving here, so I didn't see it fitting in. So I'm looking at it at the meeting, uh, just gives me hives. I can't think that fast. So, um, I think that's one thing we can do to streamline meetings and then, and then you'll get less, my confusion in the meetings. Um, the consent agenda and then this idea about the committee reports not focusing on the past so much, like what has happened, what hasn't happened. The, what four acre said is, is put that in writing and then put everything else, like what's, what's, the only thing you speak about is what you need the community help with or a decision or an action item. I really do, I, I would agree, Kyle, I love the idea of putting purchased things in consent agenda unless we have a reason to look at and talk about. So, um, but four acre said, uh, sorry, I'm all the stuff. Four acre did say that, um, surprises or when you put people into a feeling of being confused can, can raise the kind of emotional content in the room. And so if we can reduce that, we might be able to also reduce meeting length. And then lastly, speaking of that, I wanted to say that's something I've always appreciated about land use. Is I feel like sometimes those discussions help the community get their emotions out. But I also feel like land uses can be more creative, like people can throw ideas around more, whereas we just don't have that time. It's, our structure doesn't work well for that. So I like the creativity of land use and that's where I see an advantage. Anyway, I'm, I guess I'm trying to offer, argue both sides of this because I feel like it's a slippery slope and I want to make sure we're.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I agree with pretty, with lots of things. And two that were, would help, I think, also, and everyone would benefit is having that packet and included in there. So you have time to read through. So you know what, you know what's all the reports are because Margaret has a spot at the end called supervisor reports. And at the beginning of my time, I thought, oh, I need to get my supervisor reported. But that is a time where you could say the past and the future. But when we do the, the beginning, that maybe in the room, they only hear that, but in the packet, the report's in there. And that's there by Thursday or Friday before. So we could all have a chance to read it and know. I think that's when we're standing at the supervisor report part, the bottom of the agenda or the packet agenda.
So I have a portion of that. I'm often not really sure what to say about community because it's all in the land, like especially land use. So it's like all in there and, and. especially land use, so it's like all in there and Margaret's fantastic minutes. So I never know, like, do I, do I really sit here and rehash the minutes when anybody wants to do what happens to land use knows you could get online and like, I'm not really sure what to give for my parts. I always feel like if I'm not saying something, then I'm not doing my job, if I am saying some of the time that we.
It always felt like, uh, the sign you're supplying, so you say that you've just twelve different things, loads of detail that we discussed and we'll get to that.
Exactly.
Which is kind of both the problem. Sure, by the way, so I'm hearing several different threats here. One is, uh, consent agenda, which I think I'm getting a sense everyone seemed quite comfortable with the idea of a, of at least trying a consent agenda. Allied, but not quite the same is the issue of items that we can, we can introduce and act on, or we can introduce and act on at the same meeting. And then the third thing is being much clearer about when something is changed and when something is truly new versus was published, you know, was published in the agenda, you can go at least in a packet three or prior week. So I think all of those are good, good general principles. Um, I think if we, if we can be clearer about what needs to go through a, an introduction, then a, um, hearing and deliberation model, as opposed to those things that can go through introduction or affect the introduction liberation decision at the same meeting, I think that would really help. And there are some guidelines in the current circles and procedures. I think we're gonna have to work on making that clearer. And then anything that's changed would not, you know, if something's changed in one work, other than it would be for a criteria, criteria would have to be clear. If something has been, if something is the same as it was when it was just a month ago, then we can go and act on it. But if there's a significant change, we'd have to go through something different. We have to do something special to act on it or we'd have to go through an extra step or something. And only if it's time sensitive, we do that. So we've started to touch on that a little bit in our general guidelines for how we can move something to the, uh, to old business, new business. But I think we could do that more formally and do that sort of consistently.
I just add, and we all know this, but presentations are even separate and sometimes can take a long time, but would be maybe confusing, is that an action item or do we do this, something about this in the future? Like the one that comes to mind is Tim Glassett coming to, to several meetings, because but then it became, it changed every time a little bit evolved, but it was a presentation and lots of questions, good questions. And we could have more presentations, maybe every entity.
So the two Gach, the two Gach lectures, another example of something just purely a presentation required or actually he was, he was using GBS as a way to, you know, as a way to sort of at least focus community, focused way to get community presentation somewhere. And there are probably, you know, there are other, people do other ways, individual events as well. Jennifer.
So I have a comment and then also a question. Um, the comment is like, well, I, again, I agree, but just devil's advocate side on this is that we've, we heard more than once from LUC in the past year and a half that there were things that we didn't consider substantive that they did in such a chance. I think we gotta just be really careful about that. But then my question is about specific examples and, uh, two examples that come to mind immediately as, as surely are the architectural presentations that we hear four times and then the weed thing. And both of those are, you know, like, I have a genuine question about this. I don't understand, like, are we comfortable with how that works right now? The weed thing in particular, the, a lot of people care about that one a lot, but we hear the exact same thing, right? And then sometimes it feels like we hear, uh, the same questions raised by different people in each thing. It just can be, that can be frustrating, but maybe that's how we have to do it because it's so important that the community's on this one way or the other. And then on my question related is, like on the architecture stuff, like Z Architectural also do this really thorough presentation each time. You know, maybe there's a way to say, but I'm, and, and there was obviously point to it, like, as I said earlier, like it changed, they changed that project based on what the community studies means, right? On the other hand, I, it does, it does take a long time and I don't know if we need four full presentations. This is a genuine question on what the board thinks about this situation.
A real quick, the, the first thing that comes to mind is they are fulfilling their requirement and we are in the space for that presentation. We, this or land use also, and because of our process that Z would understand is he comes to, if it's required, it's optional, whatever, but, but that's very good question, doesn't need to be more because we're acting.
So I think that's a point, when it comes to, um, certain, you go through planning, you have to have a community, you have to have a community presentation, community meeting before the application. So for example, taking, uh, taking the comprehensive plan as an example, we had a joint meeting that, well, actually that did not require a community meeting, we went through the process and so we had the joint meeting, then the application went in. And then in the future, we'll have the opportunity to comment on planning actions. Now, we've obviously also had a whole bunch of other community meetings about independently and through LUC and GBS. But that, that sort of idea of there needs, there's, you know, there is a requirement code, there's a community meeting, which often is a land use for law. And that's separate then from us and the, the standard LUC GBS process. So maybe there are times where you do three, if you want to go through both land use and GBS. Some of those architectural presentations, they should be, they should be a standard of presentations, should have a straight time.
Don't think it's fifteen, I'm sorry, twenty.
Yeah, we should actually stick to that.
Just a thought, thank you. So we, we, we need to make, um, we need to, to make declarations if we have any conflicts and decide on if there are conflicts based on a kind of a checklist, if you will. And we could potentially come up with a checklist of some multiple criteria, whether it's required, whether it is using taxpayer dollars or whether it's a life safety issue, you know, kind of going down and saying, this is, this is, um, something that is going to need to run through all meetings, you know? It's because one size will not fail for this for sure. And, you know, and another one that kind of comes into mind is just like tonight, we're going to hear from Forest Fair Community, no objection. This is something that, you know, we could take care of on a consent agenda, at least a little here, but it's, uh, I, I just, I think back to all of the presentations, Tom Glassett comes to mind and Holly and her presentations, not only does this have a time limit to it, but it also has a resource allocation for who's preparing the comprehensive plan or who's compared, who's, um, building the trails plan. Each one of those presentations has a five thousand dollar price tag that adds to the price of a project.
All right.
Wanted to offer that to me, some of this has changed and I'm speaking, I think as a member of the public, this has changed since there isn't really, uh, I want to say there isn't a news source, but there, it, it's not the same as in the days prior when there was like a, a newspaper that people went and got their information from. And, you know, there are always limitations to that, but I do believe that the Board of Supervisors, because it's broadcast and because it's available on video, is a place that people could become used to getting information. And I think some people do use it that way. So I think that when it comes down to like limiting a presentation, uh, we tell them ten minutes, beginning to end anyway, leaving time for Q and A, you have ten minutes. Whether you all afford them more time is completely up to you. But I think that the validity of having the public be able to extract the information that they need from that presentation is, is pretty wise. And I don't know how to achieve it other than here, at, at least as we exist, you know, like, I can't create a bulletin board where only the pertinent stuff or the correct stuff or anything else is shared. So I think seeing this as an opportunity for education and whether or not it's agreement or disagreement or having anything to do with conversations that spawned from that, it's an opportunity for education and, um, I don't have a way to make that shorter or quicker.
Okay, I think the, the two Gach presentation, last meeting, previous meeting, uh, is a good example of that, if it wasn't directly related at all to anything we have responsibility for, but it was a really good, really good opportunity for the public to ask questions and sort of understand what's going on.
Right.
And to their point of the presentation, I think that's interesting.
Right, and not buried into, you know, a meeting packet, which
Yeah.
I would love to put everything in writing and have people be able to find it, but I mean, that's not how any of us were.
So I guess we've touched on presentations in, in the sense of presentation without actions and then whether we need the, uh, whether we need multiple presentations when we're going through, you know, old business, new business and everything else. My personal thoughts, we should, we should address the old business, new business thing explicitly and have a clear set of conditions where things introduced, acted on at a later date and not have that as the default. Because at the moment, everything goes through that process. Consent agenda is a way we can act on it even quicker of having introduced and not even have to discuss it, of just say yes or no, I think. So that's kind of one step beyond the two meeting criteria. Now, we can only, the way we set things up at the moment, we can recommend that LUC do the same thing we had done to the process, but so we've given them the latitude to, to sort of do things a little differently, but perhaps we can find a good model for us and then hopefully, so that we'll get socialized across all committees. Trails, sorry, Brian.
Thank you. Two, two points if I may. We could consider trying to also put a time limit on feedback is, is one way to move things through. I mean, that, then, then that creates this kind of referee position that's tough to, tough to maintain, but there's, there's plenty of times where the amount of feedback, um, gets into, it's, it's just a loop as opposed to, um, a legitimate debate of, yeah, consideration.
Can you tell one thing about that?
Please.
I think, I, I think one thing we've maybe recently figured out as a board is that we haven't been using the, um, call for vote tool very well, like we could, we could, rather than saying, okay, well, we just a limit on who can talk, you could just say, it seems like we're having a general consensus, could I call for a vote? And I, I believe any member of the board can do that according to Robert's report. And, uh, once you call for a vote, I can't remember if that has to be seconded or can you just call for a vote?
I can't remember.
I can't remember either.
I'll have to on the check.
Working on the parliament.
Definitely, you can't interrupt. You can't, you can't amend, you just have to go ahead and do it.
Yes, and then that, that's a way to, um, yes, that, that's a way to just make it happen.
Yeah. And then, I'll name, speak on the old business, new business dynamic. And there, there is a little bit of confusion right now about how that whole dynamic works and whether, let's say, something goes through, needs to go through trails committee, whether it goes old business, new business, trails, old business, new business, um, LUC, then, then old business, new business, GBOs. Or is it legitimate to do new business, new business, new business, old business, old business, get it out of the way? And, uh, I think that there should also be a way for GBOs to recognize if something has gone through new business, old business in an advisory committee, that it might allow us a, um, an avenue to, um, have a, have a, again, a collaborative discussion and, and issue an opinion on a single meeting.
That's a good point, that the, the conversation can happen outside of GBOs, but we have to.
Exactly, you know, and so, um, you know, is it, um, would that be something that would streamline the process and would it also be something that encourages people to attend? Cause I think that, that encouraging people to attend is one of the biggest challenges that we absolutely have. We all know that the same twenty people go to every damn meeting in this town. And, and it's always really interesting when you get forty five or fifty people all of a sudden.
You know, I'm just, I was just reading this article here, cause I, you know, I read this earlier today, I'll go back on it, you know, the assembly is considering also taking on land use issues without even going to P and Z, like it coming straight to them. But the, but it reminds me of their process right now is everything's a one meeting stopped. So it goes to P and Z and may not, they go one meeting and then it goes up to the assembly and then gets one meeting and usually gets approval unless, uh, it could be introduced, just introduced and not discussed, um, and then discussed a month later. But P and Z, I think they only do one meeting reviews, um, on it so that it doesn't, it particularly, will only be discussed twice. It'll be introduced once, give it some time, um, but then, then acted upon. So, you know, that's something that could be considered in, in the, in the more efficiency, because I do agree with Brian, there is, I don't know how many times we have to stop the vote at land use because people are ready to vote on it that night and they're there, right? And I go, well, it's new business and, and then the next month you may have a quarter of what was there that night, you know? And so it's, it's just not sometimes representative of what's happening. There's always the strategy of what side you're on, the more you talk it, you talk it to death or you distill it or you confuse it by the time it gets out, that's a strategy for those who are against it and sometimes strategy for people who want something, they can use those meetings. But I think the more efficient we are in these meetings with these topics, it, it's happening now in the city at the level above us, um, that, you know, you could have less meetings and still get through public discussion on it. You know, cause every time I describe it to somebody, you're gonna have to go through four meetings. It's gonna be four meetings, if it's very efficient, it's gonna be four meetings over like no more than thirty five days, but you're gonna have to go through four meetings. And it's just like, wow, you have to come to four meetings, get through my variance for my property so I can put a fence in? Yes, I'm sorry.
As Brian said, that's, that's the dollar figure associated with that, if you've got professional stuff, you've got
Correct.
An architect or somebody else.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not inexpensive, it's another thing that adds to.
Question about it, I wonder if it would work. In, in that kind of situation to, to, like, for example, land use, to use the land use supervisor to say, okay, guys, this thing is coming up, like, why couldn't the land use supervisor introduce it and not have that presentation happen, but just say, all right, so everybody knows at the next meeting, but it, and I've used GBOs this way, like with the, um, when I was introducing the idea of the parliamentary thing and they gave me the list, all I needed to know was what people were interested in, like what might, what would you be more likely to vote for, what subject matters would you be interested in? So the conversation only took a minute and a half, right? Because I didn't go through the whole thing of what kind of training, who's training and blah, 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 just if you're going to do training, which of these subject matters? And I think we could possibly introduce some things to land use that same way. This is coming up, these are some of the things that, the salient points about this, it's still gonna be tricky with like architectural projects and streams that, you know, it's, it's, I don't know when you need, I, I don't know that line, but we could play with it a little bit and we could talk to land use about it, like when we have our next joint meeting, we could just kind of say, what do you guys think of rethinking how this is in the interest of increasing public participation? And I will say overall, I do see generally more public participation than pre-code. I mean, I do think we have, but there, there have been complications to that as well then, right? But I think that part's great. We do have overall, maybe it's twenty, but I know I used to go to land use, it's four. Twenty is good. Anyway.
Well, you know, and it may be that if it's coming out of, uh, land use, um, it may be it doesn't, it just needs a standard introduction here so that petitioner doesn't sit in the room until nine forty five at night just to introduce it. We're all trying to like go home and, uh, it could be introduced that way, uh, just saying it's coming because it's being, cause you know what happens is by code, they actually don't even need to come back, they could come here, do their initial presentation, get as much feedback as they can, write that down, put it in their packet and planning department's pleased. And, and then a lot of times, like, uh, a, uh, organization like Marco will like, well, let's go back and get a letter of support. It just strengthens your packet, you know, when you go to P and Z, um, and you could do that, but we also seen people with strategy like, I'm not coming back, you know, and they're gonna go and they know they got the momentum of P and Z behind them and they're gonna get approval and go forward. So, so I think that's, uh, that's always a strategy and I always tell people like, you're gonna come back. At that point, we would. At that point, we would introduce it at GBOS, but I don't think the petitioner needs to be here, you know, and if we want to continue, those are two ways, so.
So on the topic of items that go through planning in particular, um, we've got this kind of odd situation where I think partly it's, it's addressed as if it's the petitioner's choice as to whether land use or GBOS makes it, makes any opinion on it. But, you know, that's part of our role is to review, I mean, part of our GPS, municipality, if you, um, land use applications. So, you know, even those that don't go to planning, so, you know, there's the, these are published, they're shared as, you know, as packets we can comment on. So we kind of almost have, I wouldn't quite say obligation, but, um, you know, there is a, there is the expectation that the committee council or GBOS, um, would, can make comments, they will make comments independently of whether the petitioner wants to. It's not their choice, you know, we can still make comments, and that came up a little bit earlier today as to whether, you know, whether Marco could just say, well, I don't want your comment. He can't stop us, and should stop us, that's not the way it works. Um, that's different from some other things. If, uh, if they're asking for, you know, if that's something you coming from, or they're asking for some recommendations, or something else. But, but land use thinks it's not, it's actually part of our obligation, we probably should, um, even if the land use packet just have a list of all active, uh, the active cases. Tried, tried to do that a little bit with the, uh, with the development list that we have at GBOS, uh, but we could actually have that as part of land use perhaps, but that's a question for land use. Um, the one other thing I want to say, let's move on, and then I'll kind of keep. Um, you didn't add convention on our list of things where we continue. I assume that everyone is very happy with hybrid meetings, we want to continue. I think that's, that, as you say, I think that speaks successfully to meetings, there's so much more participation.
Yeah, I, I've known you when I've read, and you see at land use meetings, there's more people.
Yeah.
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 Yes, yes.
All right.
Um, so somewhat unrelated to this, but more along the lines where Jennifer has been going with sort of the training that we received and maybe the, the future training. One of the things that really spoke to me in, in the, um, training that did occur was that Robert's Rules isn't always helpful, and it can be used as a tool that is unhelpful. Um, and in one place that I find that, um, all of our committees kind of get wrapped around the axle is in making motions. And I really think that in, in the presenter's explanation of it, you know, she said that this does not, making a motion in the positive and making sure it's all proper and whatever, and getting a second doesn't really engender the conversation that probably still needs to happen, because technically you have a motion and then you discuss. And, I mean, I, I watch you guys struggle with what amendments to make and all the rest of that. So I would really encourage that maybe GBOS consider looking at, um, a conversation to figure out what it is that they want to do, and then craft what the language is that matches that, instead of trying to unwrap where they've gotten to. Um, in any case, but.
So do you mean, where other subcommittees have done things, or do you mean us, just ourselves?
Well, I mean, I would hope that each of the committees would consider talking about the, talking about the topic fully, and then figuring out what they want to do, rather than trying to say what they want to do, and then discuss it and find out that their motion needs to be amended in like eight different ways in order to work. Um, and I think that we saw that in the Trails Committee, we abandoned the making motions while we were working through the Trails Plan for a long time, and then, you know, got, got it figured out before we started working on the motions. Um, kind of. Anyway, I just think presenting a, a situation where people can have a full conversation before they're trying to come to the answer. I feel like the Robert's Rule system is to provide the answer and then work it out. And it just seems like you end up with a different beast, takes longer, and can create some conflict that I don't think really needs to happen.
I think that's true.
Go ahead.
Well, I think it's really interesting feedback, I'd forgotten about that part of the presentation, but now that you mentioned it, um, there were, there were two things about that, what is, first of all, we do that on a regular basis, and then we go back, oh, no, we need permission, right? And then two, I think you're absolutely right, then you, you end up forming the conversation you're allowed to have based on the assumptions on the table. So I think that's super interesting feedback, and I think it, it also gets really confusing for people, uh, both in GBOS and LUC with, uh, the need sometimes to make a motion just to start the conversation, and so you end up with, yeah, anyway, it gets weird.
As I said, I think one of the things I like about GBOS works is we don't typically make a motion first. Normally, we introduce the topic, discuss the topic, and then make a motion. Although that does sometimes mean the conversation can go on a while, where we're not actually going to do anything with it. You know, we may not even need the information. Um, so, you know, sometimes it allows things to just drag on. But I think, you know, as we've already discussed, there are ways we can, we can throw a motion in and try and vote on that motion to, you know, close something down, stop it from becoming a contest. Uh, before we finish, I want to try and make sure we blow light six. Um, I just want to make sure we've covered all the things on the list here. There was a list of specific things that you have, Brianna?
Oh, there is from the old edits of the, I think, rules.
Right.
And I, I have an article.
We generally cover that enough, definitely. Um, so yes.
I do, you see.
I've all seen them before.
Let's change the symmetry power we discussed, public hearings could kind of half-discuss. Uh, I think that falls in, that partly falls in the, um, some things, if we, if we can come up with a list of, a clear, um, checklist of what's important to have to have a extended discussion of it, then we can have the, uh, we can introduce something and then have a public hearing at length. I think that's covered under that.
And we also mentioned the possibility of talking about some of this stuff at our next joint, when you see.
Yes, 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 I think what, we may want to be further down the conversation ourselves, we have a proposal. Um, dress stuff, I'm not sure we've done that completely. Um, I'm interested in, uh, your views as well, what's the most difficult, apart from meetings that go on till eleven? Uh, what's the most difficult things you see from your point of view, things we do that make your life hard? Submitting things.
You can always carry in the books.
Yeah, putting things in the packet a minute before a meeting, bad, bad, I accept that, that's absolutely right. Something we need to focus on going in.
I don't know that that's really all that realistic. I, I mean, I appreciate the sentiment, but I think the reason that things come in at the last minute is because this is a volunteer board. You guys have other things in your lives, I really, I, maybe I don't protect that enough, but like, I, I do respect that. Um, and I think the same is true of, there are different reasons that things might come in what seems like late. I think that the fact of the matter is this, that the meeting is when the meeting is at, and somebody could come and lay something on the table immediately that you guys should take up, could and should, you know? So, anyway, I, I don't think that would actually be one of the things on my mind. I would say that
Me too.
I feel like I, I took on a role of writing some documents for a while, that it's, I'm probably not qualified to do those things. I can help, I can help edit, um, but I think that the actual writing of documents is something that needs to fall a bit differently.
You mean like resolutions and?
Yeah, probably those, and, you know, maybe some other things too, but I think just generally, these positions should be trusted as being impartial, and I'm not sure that I have managed to maintain that.
We definitely should put you in a position where we're trying to get you to make policies and decisions on things.
Correct.
I think we try not to, but I'm not sure we would succeed. Yeah, I appreciate the, I appreciate the advice, the impartiality. Um, and the other thing I hate is obviously speeding up things, certain decision-making processes, which we've already covered.
Yeah, because we already know, after we get done with you, we still have a long road of bureaucracy ahead of us, and so it's like, we want to, we don't want to stampede things through the community, but at the same time, we also want to keep things efficient, so, um, in that aspect. You know, and with that, sometimes when there's disagreement between board members or disagreements between board and committees, we take the initial brunt of frustration from the community, because they probably don't feel as comfortable reaching out to individuals on the boards or the committees. Um, and so they express their frustration to us. I don't know how many times I've been on a phone call and said, I can't speak for them, and I'm not them, but if you want to vent, you are more than welcome to vent, but in the end, I'm not the decision maker, you know, we're here to carry the water. And, um, and so we, we, we deal with that, so when things get, um, get tensions, uh, we tend to see a lot of it first. That's just because people can call and reach us, because we're working here, so, and we realize that, so we try to temper it, and I don't know how many times, like, I've told Margaret, I said, just put them on hold and transfer them to me, and then I deal with them, you know, in that aspect, because it's not fair to Margaret to deal with that, that's something that's probably more at my level. But, but just you're be aware that we deal with that at times.
Well, I can imagine some of the people feel perfectly comfortable calling us directly and saying, I don't think I'm the only one. But anyway, just, you know, we do get some of that.
We have a tip of the iceberg.
I say, I don't know, I don't know, like, sometimes it feels like a very good tip. Um, you know, real quickly, I forgot to mention something, I felt a little awkward at our last GHCC, GBOS joint meeting. Um, we handled that differently without any discussion, we handled that very differently than we do LUC. When LUC meets with us, they are allowed to make motions, et cetera, and we just, uh, disenfranchise them right there in the moment at the table. Uh, and I, I, I know we're at the end of this meeting, maybe we can put it onto a, to a ten-minute meeting to discuss, but I felt like we should have at least had a conversation about it, because we did appoint them to make decisions for their areas of expertise, and then we put them in a position where, you know, personal was trying to dictate to me about a motion to make, uh, or not dictate, she wasn't dictating, she was suggesting, and the whole thing was just awkward. Um, I would have felt more comfortable if she could have made the motion directly, right, trying to say things exactly right. And I was perfectly comfortable, would have been comfortable with them being allowed to vote in that circumstance, and we've essentially invited them into our territory to some extent. It's our meeting, then I feel like they should be allowed to vote, especially when we're working on how, like, trying to find consensus on housing issues, I think this is gonna be, it's such a tough, painful subject, and they've been working on it for a year, and they should be allowed to vote.
We, um, I think we did the same with LUC typically, um, that we have, we have a joint meeting, but if there are actually votes to be taken, it's typically GBOS. It's my recollection, I believe so. Unless it's something where they're definitely separate, uh, where effectively we're having two meetings in parallel. So we did, for example, with the, uh, with the comprehensive plan, that was meant to be two parallel meetings at the same time, efficiency, but typically that is not. But that's a good question, we should, and make a deliberate decision, make it clear at the beginning of the meeting, what we're having proposals, I think that, clarity is on.
Clarity, no surprise.
Right.
Okay.
To get everyone at least fifty-five minutes.
I want to give everyone a break, I do think we need to, um, we need to actually have some action coming from this though. Uh, we've had the discussion, I think it's up to us as individuals, and as, if you want to, as chairs, to either craft language or make some proposals, or come up with things that we can, uh, we can put in front of us and the body when we next have the opportunity to discuss this. But what I don't want to do is, you know, have this discussion and make nothing happen, and just basically start again next time. So if this sparked any thoughts, or you've got any suggestions, let's write stuff down, bring it to the later meeting. And we can do that in pairs, up to pairs, but a little too.
I feel like we've made some good progress today on consent agenda, and I think that's something that's probably a long way to prove, to figure out how to put a, see, the, the thing about consent agenda is, is that we're gonna be reaching out to the group outside of a public, you know, it's a published meeting, and outside of an agenda item, and, um, and so informing the community how this works, so we need to make sure and have a, a packet is, is, you know, that goes, a packet, excuse me, just with introductions, saying, this is, this is a procedure now for GBOS to improve our efficiency. Quick little slideshow, some points on it, and, and examine some of the community as a, um, understanding when we, when we intend to use it, and the benefit to them.
Right, yep. That's, yeah, that's a combination of both consent and this, you know, one acting at the same meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And not that anything we're doing is outside of public meeting, outside, outside of the public process. Like, we still, when we publish things, it becomes. Okay, um, I think we should, uh, I guess, any public comments? Are there any other comments, I mean, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourned.
Second.
Fifty-four minutes.